Alright, I believe we're ready to move forward at this point. At this point, we are going to convene the hearing, the charter school hearing, on the application of Education for New Generations Charter School. I know a number of you were here for the prior application, but for those of you who were not, let me repeat a few of my comments from that time. This is a public hearing, so everyone here who wishes to speak regarding this application will be given the opportunity to do so. If time does not permit this evening, this hearing will carry over to tomorrow night, when we will reconvene at 6 o'clock. Please note that we have a court reporter here. Anyone who wishes to speak, again, you'll be given the opportunity to do so, but please note that we have a court reporter whose job it is to take down the record of everything that is said this evening. As a result, two people cannot speak at the same time. We also ask that you speak very clearly, so that we can have a good record. If I interrupt or stop you, it is not to inhibit you from making your comments, it is simply to make sure that she is able to keep a good record. Before turning this matter over to the applicant, I will make a few things exhibits for the record. Exhibit number one will be the application that had been submitted by Education for New Generations Charter School. That education, I'm sorry, that application includes a number of supplements that were submitted after the actual application came into the school district. We prepared a notice of tonight's hearing. That will be exhibit number two, and that notice was published in accordance with law in the reporter, and that proof of publication will be exhibit number three. Our method of proceeding is to allow the applicant to present its case in whatever fashion it would like to do so. At that point, there will be questions from members of the administration, as well as from the school board. At the conclusion of that portion, I will then open it up for any public comment, questions, any comments, support, or against the application. Having said that, I think at this point, then, it's time for the applicant to move forward, and I note that the applicant is represented by Mr. Joshua Pollak.
Thank you. My name is Naomi Rodriguez. I'm a 7th grade math teacher in the Perkyomen Valley School District, and very, very happy to be here today. We're very excited to present for you, and we really appreciate the time that you're taking to hear our application. To my right is Kim Sire, 8th grade reading teacher in the Narsetown Area School District. To my left, as you mentioned, is Joshua Pollak of Latcha Davis &amp; McKenna. Also to my left is Ryan Schum, our business coordinator from Charter Choices. Also here today is Peter Olman of the Percheron Group, who will be handling our commercial real estate development. Barry Greenberg is also here, the real estate agent of Martin Baker, who is the owner of the building who submitted, with whom we've submitted a letter of intent. We also have a number of our community partners here. Stephen Jones of Milestones in Music, Lisa Foster, who provides health coaching with Fostering Health, Erin Weiner of Water Gallery. We have a number of teachers who live in the North Penn School District. Here are Heather Alcott, Patty Gandolfo, Dawn Ko, Jade Roadever. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Patty Gandolfo, Dawn Ko, Jade Roadever. We have other teachers, Joy Anis, Deborah Walker, and in case I thought I missed anyone, I apologize in advance. We also have a number of supporters here from the North Penn School District. Would you please stand up? We would like to thank all of you for being here for us today. We really appreciate it. To start our presentation, Kim Sire will, oh, our founders, excuse me, just are Kim Sire, myself, Dr. Mendoza is also here, and Elan Almag. Where's Elan? Oh, there you are. And Chris Tuftel is, we anticipate will be, has shown interest in becoming one of our Board of Trustees. Vivian Lowenstein, administrator in the Narsetown Area School District, and retired as administrator in the Quakertown School District. Okay, I think I got them all.
Okay, well, then, why don't we start by swearing in the three people that are testifying that are sitting there with you? And then, I guess, if you call any of these others to testify, we'll ask that they be
...school to present this evening. But we'd also like to show, just in our first quote, how it is also becoming a common language. And it is represented by Sir Ken Robinson, who's on the New York bestselling list, as well as the author of "The Element," which explains groundwork that needs to be done to revolutionize education for the next generations. So it states that "The world is changing faster than ever in our history. Our best hope for the future is to develop a new paradigm of human capacity to meet a new era of human existence. We need to evolve a new appreciation of the importance of nurturing human talent, along with an understanding of how talent expresses itself differently in every individual. We need to create environments in our schools, in our workplaces, and in our public offices, where every person is inspired to grow creatively." And although this is someone else's words, this is our philosophy, and we'd like to present that here this evening. So for the new paradigm that we present, we understand that all of us have a common vision, and that is the future and the globalization of the world. Does it go? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. In this new era, we need to understand revolutionary frameworks within, in each individual, within each school, within each community, that allows this new era to manage the moments through awareness, through consciousness, how to use time wisely, how to engage oneself constructively. And through that, we also have to really strive to maintain human connectivity, which nurtures the human talent. When we base our fundamentals on the beliefs of our founding fathers, and we find the life, the liberty, and the pursuit of happiness by teaching individuals how to express themselves, there's also a responsibility to make sure that every individual in this freedom maintains holistic values, academic excellence, and finds that in this excellence, they are limitless in their resources within themselves to reinvent themselves as the world changes. We want to learn to celebrate each other rather than compete through a balanced development system.
Clicker's not working. There we go. Is it, what, the clicker's attached to which computer?
It's attached to the computer.
Oh, maybe that's the problem. Okay.
You should be able to read keyboard as well, and you're on.
Oh, great. Thank you. Our mission is to provide a comprehensive education through a revolutionary framework encompassing academic excellence, balanced development, holistic values, and the will to do good. How do we do this? Our revolutionary framework begins by giving up each... A revolutionary framework begins by giving each child a home within themselves, through the understanding of who they are physically, through the development of their heart, through the development of their ability to think and problem solve, through their creative aspects and the spirit that inspires them to overcome and develop to sustain themselves in all ways. One of the most important parts to understand here is all these words, when we think about them. We can give children academic excellence and develop their ability to think. We can show that they are striving, advancing through PSSAs, but if they don't have the heart, and they go into the world as leaders, we could have one, children or leaders who are creating systems that do not sustain the health and well-being of our community or our nation or our world. We could have creative, spark the creativity in people, but if they are not grounded in a healthy, physical way to sustain themselves, can they manage financially? So when we look at each of these elements, we need to understand, how do we develop this balanced framework within each person, so that they know and can grow in a healthy We also need to align with academic excellence. We do this through an integration and immersion system through our classes that take each component or content and teach them together. We understand that when, just like the brain, in our content areas, if we learn everything separately, and we never learn how to put them together, we might not find out who we are in our capabilities of understanding ourselves as scientists, maybe expressed through reading. So how do we take these immersions, these integrated lessons, through our classes called Expressions, Energetics, Necessities, Perspectives, Creations, and Investigations? And in this unique way to approach academic excellence, we allow children to build upon what they know, but develop within their classroom a session and a practice forum for them to develop mastery. Okay. How do we also encourage this is through our schedule. If you look at this unique schedule, this is not like anything else that is done right now. We begin our day at 8 o'clock with morning energetics, that is, goal-setting affirmations, ways to center and calm themselves, reflect on the day before, so they make sure that they know who they were, what they decided, how they can make different choices, rather than keep repeating history or making mistakes without that awareness. In our first area, we, in the morning, if you look at the morning schedule, this is all our content area, taught in the morning. We have our Investigations class, again, which will teach our science, our math, and our music, integrated throughout the curriculum. At 10 o'clock, everyone in the building is targeting, through necessities, the intervention areas where children might need more instruction or enrichment in order to advance themselves. This could be a time of social skills, of behavioral development, academic striving, or just going back and re-teaching things that some children did not get according to the data. If you look from 10:40 to 5:00 to 11:30, we continue our content immersion program with Perspectives, that is, our reading, that is, our language, and that is our art, I'm sorry, Reading, History, and Art classes, integrated. Now, it's one thing to, again, fill the minds with information, but if you look at our afternoon, we go then to lunch, recess, a time to get outside or exercise. We also have a chance to learn Spanish as a language. And then, we go to another block of learning, but the unique aspect of this is if a child is not in creations, they are in expressions. And creations and expressions, what they have in common is it's a practice-based time, where they take projects and interests that they've sparked from their content area and develop it through project-based learning, through experiential learning, by actually talking it out, working together, using systems to integrate and activate the information and knowledge that they use through projects that they have to learn, if they make mistakes, how to fix it. Now, again, we want to make sure, although we're filling the minds with this information, and then advancing them intellectually and developmentally, our energetics class is to make sure that they can then safely assimilate this information by using physical activity, by using our community and the expertise of our community to come in and teach dance, art, sculpting, drama, agriculture. So then, we also move over and learn as teachers from people who specialize in this field, and we can cultivate that within our classrooms, within our students. So again, we continue to not only move the minds, but then take the students outside the classroom, merge them with the expertise in the community, and allow them to continue to advance themselves through those learnings and through that activation. So again, our curriculum, what is unique is we have an extended day. We have the morning content areas, afternoon exercise, and increased opportunity for collaboration.
I'd just like to say that the discrepancy between the slides and what is being said is because the same thing is not happening on the laptop is up there, and Kim's not able to read up there, only down here. So please be patient with us.
Okay, balanced development. Okay, through the balanced development, we also, again, will hear from Ryan Schum, and he will explain how we, although this seems like an idea, like, that could be challenged financially, we have addressed the budget and have made that in the five-year projections. We continue with academic excellence by beginning with the leadership within the teachers. We have four teachers with over 10 years' experience, four teachers with three to 10 years' experience. We have three certified reading specialists. We have certified special education teachers, certified early childhood teachers, and 10 certified elementary teachers. So we have highly qualified teaching staff.
Who have applied so far. So these are our teaching applicants. We have yet to go through the interview process and determine who will be the actual teachers of the school.
Okay, and also, the calendar. The calendar, if you see, in 2014, 2015, has the unique attributes of our school. We will start August 1st. We will end the school year in August, June 26th. We, one of the reasons we want to do this is because we want to, we understand PSSAs, the standardized test scores are something that we need to be measured to. So we want to make sure that, rather than the stress and the putting pressure on the teachers and students, that we begin the school year ahead of time and make those dates. So we have the PSSA timing. We believe also with the extended year, especially with the way society is going right now, children need to be highly involved, that parents are working so hard to keep their children active at the times off the school year, that we want to make sure that we help support that need to keep these motivated students and kids looking for somewhere to put their activity and energy into these safe schools. So we also have professional development each month. Okay, our balanced development also continues through our capacity to balance our leadership within the teachers and the students. I'd like to start with the right-hand side, so you understand, one of the unique aspects is, while we have these curriculums, we always keep in mind the energy and the development of children on the physical level, the heart level, the thinking level, the creative level, and the spirit level. And we want to make sure that these circles stay balanced within a child, to create the devices and systems that will allow them to sustain health and well-being. As expressed before, imagine if one wheel is bigger than the other, what it does to a tire, what it does to a car, is similar to what it could do to a child. So we want to make sure that they're running smoothly, effectively, and efficiently in their development. And we support this by supporting teachers with initiatives, just through our curriculum of Science and the Prime Companion, through neurodevelopment, through our community partnerships with Milestones and Music, and our art programs of Meet the Masters. The culture and development of these students is very important. We also have initiatives supporting our school, IIBD, which is the International Institute for Behavioral Development. The Children's Literacy Initiative is a model in which we... Thank you. Yes, International Institute for Behavioral Development. And we also look for the Children's Literacy Initiative as a model for how we will run our classrooms. We have a partnership with making sure that our teachers are nationally board-certified, which will be modeled from Naomi, who is currently a national board-certified teacher. So how do we continue this through holistic values? We want to make sure, again, we sustain systems not within each, not alone, not just with each child, but within the school, the community, and family, that we all work together to understand who each person is individually and collectively, and how we can sustain each other. So we want to make sure that all we do in and out of the classroom is working together with this model in mind, that we are serving the school, serving the community, and serving Our holistic values, again, continues with our need and desire to be able to support the gifts and treasures within the North Penn School District, within this community. We have these partnerships already established with these various businesses, which will not only share their expertise within our schools, but will also allow us to put student work, student activities out into the community, to share the expertise in which we have within our building. You can see the variety, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll go on. Okay, so we ask that you invent and invest in a complementary system that is innovative, supportive, and brings a new energy to public education. We ask that you approve the application of ENG Charter School to complement the North Penn, the outstanding work of the North Penn School District. That's, we provide something so unique, so new, that, like was said earlier, we can create the laboratory, which allows us to research the new paradigms for the future, and work together to serve the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, so now that you have a picture of our school, what I'd like to go over with you really quick is the question of whether we comply with the law regarding our charter school application. Let me open that PowerPoint real quick.
Excuse me, if I could just jump in.
Yes.
You're using these PowerPoints, which is fine. If you'd like to make them exhibits to the record, we can do that, but I would just ask that you email copies of them to me.
Okay.
Is that what we're gonna do?
Yeah, that's the expectation, Mr. Doolie.
Okay.
We'll email them to you tomorrow, and ask that they be entered into the record.
All right, thank you.
It should be on the desktop. Oh, is this your computer? Oh. We can use the key for recording the mouse. Okay. I think we just... Thank you. I can close that.
Do you not have the mouse?
Um... Have you had difficulty working it before? Uh, is there another mouse? Oh, here we go. Come on.
You know what? Sometimes it's went that far back, it doesn't work so well.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
Oh.
Has to do with...
Is somebody helping?
We're just close up to the other seats there and take a little bit of that.
Can I, I can use the key. Okay. So, do we comply with the law? That's really the basic question that you guys have to answer today. I know you have a lot to consider, so we decided to try and make it very easy for you. The law that has to do with our application is primarily Section 1717A, which includes references to 1719A and 1702. So we're gonna go through each of the points made by these sections and show you how we have met them within our application. Okay. So the very first point, we need to show sustainable support. We have already provided 200 pre-enrollments and counting, they are still coming in, all of them from the North Penn School District, all of them within the grade levels that we intend to open. We have 13 community partners. Actually, the number is 14. This is also growing. We intend to continue establishing more partnerships within the community. We have at least 10 certified teachers who have applied, and we did not do any marketing for this. They heard about us, they heard about our mission, and believe in it, and have let us know that they're interested in teaching in our school. Upon approval of our charter school application, we will be interviewing these teachers. Okay, check. So that's covered. Section two, our capability. As I'm sure you've read in our application, our founders provide a diverse set of skills, being nationally board-certified. Kim Sire being voted Montgomery County's Teacher of the Year in 2005. We have a pediatrician with us, as well as an MIT engineer and businessman who is supporting us as well. And Chris Tuftel, a teacher who, a teacher, 4th grade teacher in the Philadelphia School District, who I failed to mention before, is just finishing up his doctorate in math, math and science education. Excuse me, that's a board member. We have a number, as you see, we have a number of partners. Milestones in Music is willing to help us integrate music into our investigations curriculum, also provide expert musicians to give instruction during the energetics class. Milestones of Music is in Lansdale. We also have a partnership with Water Gallery, obviously an art gallery, a health coaching, fostering health, and a number of other partnerships. We have the teachers already, without even having put it out there that we need teachers. And as you can see here, our community is here to support us. Check. Okay. The third section, this is where we reference 1719A and 1702A. Our application must include the following. Identification of the charter applicant, that's us. The name of the proposed school, ENG Charter School, or Education for New Generations Charter Our grade levels, we intend to open full-day kindergarten, open six kindergarten to grade five, and then grow eventually to grade eight, starting with 220 students and growing to Our governance structure, section, the next section, obviously at the top are our Board of Trustees, then below them are the, our co-CEOs, and below that, our paraprofessional, professional, and office staff. Our mission has been provided. I won't repeat it, 'cause I know you've heard it already. Our goals have also been provided. Naturally, we expect all of our students to meet AYP targets. As you have seen in our curriculum, and I'll show you a sample in a second, every, all of the core content areas in our curriculum are aligned, not only to the Common Core standards, but in math, where it's relevant to the keystones as well. Develop a sustainable student-directed system to select and integrate relational projects and community partnerships. I think we've shown that with our 13 partnerships. And we also intend to regularly survey our families and ensure that they are happy with the education we are providing their children. Don't know how well you can see it, but this is the table of contents from our curriculum, just representing that we have provided a curriculum for all of our classes. And a sample showing, this is from an Investigations kindergarten class, where you can see in Unit 1 that we've aligned Investigations covering math and science, we've aligned it both to the Common Core standards in math and the PA standards in science. We intend to regularly assess our students. We believe that data is extremely important in determining our students' needs, and will be using foresight assessments, assessments from the reading programs that we intend to use, Fanta's and Pennell-Wilson Reading Assessment. We're going to use data from, it says, response to intervention in our schedule, we call that necessities. So, and that's necessities, as Kim Sire said, is that time where we see where the data shows students need support, and that's where we give them support. Obviously, we'll also be using our curriculum assessments. We also have, intend to, will be, I should say, using a lesson study program. If you haven't heard of it, it's popular in Japan, and has shown a lot of improvement in teaching and learning, and the process involves a group of teachers working together to create a lesson, implement it, and then they observe the lesson being implemented, collect the data, review the data, fix, improve the lesson, and then reapply it. So this process also collects data and will be used to inform teacher instruction, and naturally, our PSSA scores and our PASTA scores, and Keystone scores, I think that's not there, but also our Keystone scores for any 8th graders taking Algebra or Geometry. There are some misconceptions sometimes in the community. Charter schools do not choose which students come to their school... Charter schools do not choose which students come to their school. We completely intend to comply with the law in that we will be using a lottery system. As outlined in our application, North Penn students will fill our classrooms first. If we have more students from North Penn, we will be using the lottery, and then students from contiguous districts that are within the 10-mile range will also engage in the lottery process to be selected. Our school code of conduct has been submitted. I copied a brief part up here just to show a sample, however, I won't put you through reading all that. Okay. This is just a sample. We need to show that the community is going to participate, and actually, this is something that's very, very important to us. We find that when, when people work together, great things come out of this. And these are a sample of some of the committees that we, that will be formed involving Board of Trustees members, administrators, teachers, parents, and students, and community members. Our financial plan has been prepared for us with the support of Ryan Chum with Charter Choices. As we'll go over the budget, I'm sure you guys will, I'm sure we'll be going over it in more depth later, you will see that we are in the green for all five years. It's also required that we have a plan for auditing. We did contact Baum, Smith &amp; Clemmons within the North Penn School District, and they gave us a quote. This is one option that we'll be considering, we have not yet determined who we will be using for this service. We also have to show that we have procedures, as outlined in our charter school application. The first step is for, if there's a parent complaint, to address it with the participant or whoever's involved, and if it cannot be resolved at that point, it will be sent to one of our CEOs, and then the Board of Trustees will address it if it is not yet resolved. This is our building, we're very excited about it, this is 100 Commerce Drive. It's a beautiful building with cafeteria ready-made, it's near the Five Points intersection, so there's lots of access, and due to the fact that it's in that area, I believe there's 12 or 13 contiguous school districts that are within the 10-mile range of our school that if, for some reason, which we don't foresee happening, North Penn students do not fill the school, these students will be allowed to participate in the lottery.
If I can, if I can just jump in there for a moment, just to clarify what Naomi has said regarding enrollment, the law requires that we give first preference to North Penn students, and we will in fact do that beyond that, if a lottery is necessary. It's not only those students in those contiguous districts within 10 miles, it's every student in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's important to know.
I apologize that, yes, every student in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is allowed to come to our school. Excuse me for my misstep there. The reason I said 10 miles is because legally, 10 miles is where school districts are required to provide transportation. So any parent in the Commonwealth wanting to send their child to our school and is outside of the 10 miles may do so if they're willing to provide the transportation for their student. Oh, let me back up there for a second. Okay, section 12. Obviously, we have shown you that we have provided a schedule, and also a calendar as Yes, this is something very important to Kim and myself, both of us being teachers, both of us participating and providing professional development in our respective school districts. We think, we believe, and the research has shown, that educating our teachers is a top Building the capacity of teachers continuously shows student improvement, as shown in a number of research reports, including one posted on the National Board Certification website. So, we have allotted in our budget the ability to provide our teachers with Take One National Board Certification, that's the first section of the certification process. We also have spoken with the owner of the International Institute of Behavior Development, we have one of her representatives here today, Jamie Urissec, and they will be providing, not only supporting us in our special ed services, but also be providing professional development for our teachers. We also intend to work with the Children's Literacy Initiative. Lesson study obviously is an important part of teacher development, training teachers in integrating curricula, brain-based strategies, implementing the curricula, and the awareness strategies and practices and the light model that we intend to teach the students. Kim Sire has been in contact with the Athletic Director of the North Penn School District. No plans are made at this time, as we're opening K to 5, but we did open up communication, we would like to work with the Athletic Director in enrolling our middle school students in your athletic programs. As you will see, we have included criminal history records in Appendix W. We also included many records of the teachers who have expressed interest in teaching in our school, as well as official clearance statements in Appendix X. We have also received a quote for insurance. Here we have, you can see, we have included professional liability coverage, general liability, and property insurance. And here is Section 1702A. So, Section 17, 1702A, Part One, the purpose is to, that we must show that we improve student learning. And by implementing, and we do so by training, first of all, training our teachers. In our Creations Program, we also will be engaging our students in project-based learning, specifically the design thinking process. We're offering them expanded choices in learning and bringing in community partnerships, community members and experts in the community, to offer a variety of classes for our students during the energetics program, and we are providing an integrated curriculum. Encourage the use of different and innovative teaching methods. I think our curriculum is quite different, as you've seen. And creating new professional opportunities for teachers, again, our National Board Certification, training in the Meet the Masters Program, training for teachers of Milestones of Music, and working with Science Companion Lesson Study. And here we are showing that we are providing expanded choices, well, simply by being a charter school, we're providing another choice, however, we also have classes that are in addition to what are offered in the public school districts, such as the Creations Design Thinking Program, our energetics program, and Spanish Every Day. And the extent to which the charter school may serve as a model for other public schools, it is our belief that as we address all aspects of child development, and we build it into all parts of our program, that we will be doing this. Thank you so much for your time in hearing our presentation.
So, at this point, you're ready for questions?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Holb?
Thank you. Good evening. I'll be starting with some questions, and then Mr. Schach will be asking some questions that are more about the financial and facilities aspects of the application. To start, just to clarify, I think I heard you say this, but there's a couple of different grade ranges mentioned throughout your application, the cover page says K to 2, but your enrollment scheme says K to 5. It is, you were planning this as a K to.
That must be a typo.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
We are opening K to 5.
Okay.
And intend to grow K to 8.
Correct, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. On Page 30 in your application, you mentioned meeting with Alan Malahousky, who is the North Penn Education Association President.
Yes.
And it says to discuss the school's intent to quote minimize disruption to their systems as students transfer to ENG. Can you clarify for me what is meant by minimizing disruption to their systems?
Good question. First of all, I did not meet with Alan, we had a phone conversation, and the reason I called him is because I am a teacher, and I am unionized, and I understand the concerns that may occur on the other end. Our goal, yes, and what I meant by minimizing disruption is, as you know, as teachers, as students leave a school district, teaching staff must be moved around on occasion. I don't believe the number, let me rephrase that, our intention is not to hurt the North Penn School District, our intention is to provide options. And what my intention of calling Alan was to make it clear to them that we will work together to benefit everybody. Does that clarify, or do you need further clarification?
I'm not sure, because I'm not sure, I'm not sure where you're going.
Could you expand a little on that answer?
I was simply trying to open communication, that's it. We just want to work together, hear your needs, and see how we can help you, and vice versa.
How many founding coalition members are residents of the North Penn School District?
Gareth Height is one of our Board of Trustees, he's a resident of the North Penn School District.
So there are no members of the actual founding coalition that are?
No.
Okay, thank you. So I've heard you say your curriculum will contain an Algebra I course?
It's, it will be offered. If students are, if we have students who are prepared for that, or who are advanced in math and need that instruction, then it will be offered.
Okay, and I assume then students who take that Algebra I course will need to take the Keystone Exam at the end of that course?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you agree that the curriculum framework presented for your Algebra I course makes no reference to the Keystone Eligible Content for Algebra I?
It depends on where you look, one second.
I believe I was looking in the appendix with the curriculum maps.
Okay, yes, in the, in the curriculum maps, I don't believe we wrote which, what the final test is, we did not do that with K to 5 either, we didn't write PSSAs down there, but obviously everyone insisted.
I wasn't referring to mentioning, I'm sorry.
Please, just one at a time.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I wasn't referring to mentioning which test, I was referring to alignment with the actual anchors and eligible content.
I believe it is aligned, one second, please. It was a 300-page document, it might take a moment.
It.
In fact, I did that myself quite meticulously, so if you would like me to pull that up now, would you like to wait for me to pull that up now, or?
Can we have her provide the evidence later if she doesn't want to?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, that's fine. Based on the pre-enrollments that were submitted, excluding the few that you've submitted in the last week or so, the demographics of your school look like they would be approximately 50% diverse, 12% ESL, 14% special education, and 36% economically disadvantaged students, based on the status of those students as we know them.
Okay.
Do you agree that the, the strategy identified for remedying the achievement gaps that you mentioned as part of the need for the school is small class size?
I think small class size definitely supports our ability to meet these needs.
Okay.
And as well as our necessities class, which is our interventions class, and the data collection, which will allow us to make sure that we, there's no child that has a gap, and, and just in turn, the lesson study program, which will allow teachers to identify where their teaching might be not helping or hindering the child advance.
Can you please describe how related services such as speech, occupational therapy, or physical therapy will be provided to any students enrolled in your school who require them?
Yes, we intend to first contract with the International Institute for Behavioral Development. They work with students with special needs, any support that, and actually, I believe they work with the North Penn School District students as well, that you guys contract them as well, from what I understand. And any, anything that they cannot support, we would look to the IU or PTAN.
Thank you. Taking a look at your ESL information, I read through your ESL policy that you provided, but although about 12% of your pre-enrolled students are currently identified as ESL, and there is a comprehensive draft policy, there does not appear to be any discussion of an ESL, specific ESL curriculum or instructional program in your application, is that the case?
That is the case, and the reason for that is because we need to meet the students. Every student deserves an individual plan. We are aware that under the law, we are required to provide them instruction by a certified ESL teacher, and that our teachers in their content areas must also provide them support, and adaptations and modifications need to be made. However, we can't tell you what those adaptations and modifications will be at this time, because the student, it's student-centered. So when we know the students, a plan for each student will be created.
So how will you provide, then, the daily ESL language instruction that's required under the law, not just adaptations and modifications to core content?
Right, this can be provided through the necessities course. One of the beautiful things about our afternoon in the Creations and Expressions course is it can, this time could also be partially, be used if necessary, if the student has other needs.
So what will be the instructional model, then, for that daily instruction?
Again, it's based on the student needs.
So, just one more question on that area, then. How will you, how will you then ensure that the, that as per the law, the instructional model is research-based and aligned with the English Language Proficiency Standards for the state?
As you've seen with our other curriculum, we pay very careful attention to this, and it is something that I will be overseeing.
Okay, but you don't have it developed or fleshed out at this time?
Again, it can't be fleshed out until we meet the students, unless you, unless you want us to apply a one-size-fits-all, but, but that's not our intention or how we intend to operate.
Okay. Your ESL policy also refers to an ESL director for your school in the policy, but do you agree that your staffing information in the application does not address a provision for an ESL director?
We do have an ESL staff within our budget, and, and that is, that may potentially be our director in the beginning.
Okay, okay. In terms of evaluation of teachers, you make note that the Charlotte Danielson Framework will be used for teacher evaluation, and mentioned the PDE 426 and 427 forms, I assume by one of your supplemental submissions, you also want the 428 form as well?
Yes, yes.
Are you aware PDE will be discontinuing those forms at the end of this year?
Yes, we are, we know they are moving to a new system, and we intend to adapt as they move. Unfortunately, they haven't made, oh. You should know that charter schools are not required to comply with that law, however, we, we do believe in monitoring that the instruction provided our students is quality, and intend to move along with the Pennsylvania Department of Education plans.
That's fine.
Okay, all right.
And I was in no way implying that you were required to, I was just curious, with PDE eliminating that process, if you were going to stay with it or move to something else next year.
Yes, yes, we're fully aware, unfortunately, that information hasn't been provided to any, anybody, so as soon as it is, we will comply.
Sure.
Thank you.
One more question from me. I believe you mentioned that, is it that you're going to require all teachers to attain National Board Certification? Or you're, you're going to encourage them? I mean, I'm just trying to clarify, that's all.
Yeah, so you would encourage them to.
Okay, but it's not going to be a requirement for them?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Encourage, thank you for that opportunity to clarify that.
And will, who will bear the cost of doing the National Board Certification process?
That is built into our budget, and I would also like to say, one of the reasons we would like to encourage our teachers to do that is, I was very, very lucky that my principal at the time chose me to receive. do that is I was very, very lucky that my principal at the time chose me to receive a grant and I was able to do this basically for free. And I would not have been able to do it without that type of support. And it really, it really provided me with a lot of professional growth and I believe it's important for our teachers. So we would like to provide our teachers that opportunity.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Robert Schach, Director of Business Administration for North Penn. I'll ask you some financial questions. You mentioned in your application that Charter Choices, a firm that works with numerous charter schools in the state, will provide accounting services for your school. Do you have an executed signed agreement with Charter Choices at this time?
Yes, we do.
Do you agree that your budget estimate estimates a healthcare cost increase of 3% per year?
Good evening. I'm Ryan Shum from Charter Choices. Our healthcare increase, our healthcare costs are driven by a percentage of total salaries. So we have healthcare costs in the total benefit package at 18% of total salaries. As total salaries increase each year, that pushes the healthcare cost in excess of a net of 3% per year for isolating just the healthcare costs.
In excess of 3%. Are you aware that the actual increases in healthcare costs have averaged about 10% in recent years and experts expect that to continue?
I'm painfully aware of what the increase in health insurances have done to public school budgets and the challenges that creates and we believe our, our model captures enough room in the expenditure line for those costs.
So you believe you have enough room in the budget either on the revenue side or through other expenditures that can be reduced?
We believe 18% of total salaries per year will capture those costs. And we also, we understand that salaries go up every year, which drives that expense projection on the healthcare side.
Okay. Please describe your startup costs and how you'll fund those costs in the next eight months.
It's a great question, a significant challenge for charter schools, certainly since the planning and implementation grant is not available through the Department of Education. Our typical model for startup charter schools requires some type of a line of credit in July, August, and September during the first year of operation.
Okay, let's talk about facilities. The application refers to acquisition of support services through North Penn School District. Which support services are you considering contracting with the district?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yes. The application refers to acquiring support services through North Penn. And so the question is which services are you considering contracting through North Penn?
Do you mind, do you have a reference to that in the application?
Page thirty-one. About halfway through the top paragraph toward the bottom, it has a list of partnering activities and toward the end of the sentence, it says, "And the acquisition of support services from the North Penn School District through contractual agreements that help to retain educational funds within the district."
Initially, when we wrote that, at this time, we intend to have students bring a bagged lunch, okay? When we initially wrote that, we were considering speaking with the North Penn School District to see if we, you would be interested in, I suppose, contracting to provide lunch. However, that is something that, that obviously will need to be worked out after application upon your interest.
So you mentioned that in year one, students must bring their own lunch. Is that just in year one?
Our current projections are for all five years. However, we hope that with the excess funds shown in our budget or if there are, it would be nice if we could change that. Sauterton Collaborative currently also uses bagged lunches with their students.
Do you agree that students who are economically disadvantaged may have difficulty meeting this requirement of a bagged lunch on a daily basis?
Yeah, obviously, we will provide free and reduced lunch for these students.
So you're planning to participate in the national school lunch program then?
This is a process that we would have to look into after, after approval of our charter application. We are fully aware of the law and that we need to provide students with food. So these plans will be put into effect once our charter is approved.
I'll, I'll address that to a degree specifically, but more, I'd like to give just sort of a big picture perspective on our goals and objectives for crafting this five-year document that's in the charter application. A primary goal was to fully fund the unique and comprehensive educational programs that are detailed in the application. That's a significant challenge, so we balanced the unique needs of this application with historical charter school revenue and expenditure data and created the document that you see in your application. We believe we've met that big picture goal. We also believe we've built in a certain degree of flexibility. Our first year budget is driven by 198 student enrollments that, and student enrollments for charters are 97-plus percent of total revenue. So that's our primary revenue driver. You'll notice the application expects and projects 220 total student enrollments. So we, we assumed 10% less in our budget, judging by community support. I imagine we might beat that 198 student enrollment that's in the budget. And then in August, September, programs will be evaluated and hopefully programs will be able to be added, personnel added at that time as the budget allows.
Okay, that concludes my questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It would now be time for board questions.
Hi, my name's Susan Leonard. I have a couple of questions. You say your project, your projected enrollment or committed enrollment is now at 200 students?
Charter school law, I believe, we have 200 pre-Enrollments.
Okay.
If I may, since there are several numbers that have been, been put out there, there's the 198, which is the number on which we budgeted on to be conservative. We fully expect and anticipate a first year enrollment of 220 students. Again, we budgeted for 198 just to be conservative. We have 200 pre-Enrollments in the application as well as other evidence of support. Those pre-Enrollments are just that. They're, they're pre-Enrollments, they're not enrollments. We obviously can't enroll students until we have a charter. And it's our, it's been our experience as a law firm that works with dozens of charter schools that once an applicant does receive its charter, enrollments are far easier to obtain than pre-Enrollments.
Right. Okay, so my second question would be, out of those 198 enrollments, is that equally divided into the five classes that you have so that you have 44 kindergarten and 44 first grade and so on or, I mean, how is that broken down?
Ma'am, just to clarify, are you asking for the breakdown in anticipated enrollment or the breakdown in pre-Enrollments?
I'm asking for the breakdown in pre-Enrollments and does that equate to an equal number of enrollments per class?
Sure. And Naomi actually has those figures and we can certainly forward them onto you. We've done our own analysis of the pre-Enrollments. And my recollection is that while there are more in kindergarten and first grade, there is a substantial number of pre-Enrollments in each of, each K to five, which would be our first year grade span.
Okay, so that if there were more than 44 kindergarten and first grade, you would enact a lottery system? Is that what your application says for that?
The, the board would need to determine whether or not they are going to start with two kindergarten classes or if there is a very high interest in kindergarten, they can consider whether or not to add an additional class. That's up to them and also up to the limitations of the facility itself and, and the board's long-term growth plans. So while it's anticipated that we'll have around 40 students per grade the first year, with 20 and, 20 and fifth grade, I believe, you know, we won't know until those applications come in. It's anticipated that there are going to be two classes in kindergarten, but the board needs to ultimately make the determination as to when they're going to cap enrollment.
Okay. I think I have two final questions. Of the 198 pre-enrolled, have you met with the people that have pre-enrolled? Do you know them individually and their students?
We did hold a number of public meetings at the Lansdale Library and the North Wales Library where we did meet them. I can't say that we've met every single one of them. However, oh, also, we've met many of them at our First Fridays as we've held, we've had a table there for the last four months.
Okay. And my final question would be, out of those 198 pre-enrolled, how many after meeting, how many do you anticipate are special education service-needed students?
If I may, it, it sounds like Ms. Holman, did you do that research for us? Did you say 14%?
Yes.
So 13.
13 points.
13.8% of our pre-enrollees are special education. That being said, again, they're not guaranteed a spot because they put in for a pre-Enrollment. They will, they will have to formally apply for admission just as anyone else. So, you know, the, the average that we typically use is 12%. That's typically what we've seen statewide. And so that's what we budgeted for. We did not budget for the 14%.
Okay, thank you.
No, that's all right. Just, I, it may be in here, I may have missed it, but do you plan to build playground or outside facilities, of course, there?
Yes.
Okay. And we haven't talked about security, how you plan to handle security.
Can you, can you speak to that? Sure, sure. If we can swear in Mr. Holman, he can speak to that.
I am, my name is Peter Olman. I'm the president of the Perscharon Group. We're a real estate investment and commercial development company in Chester County. I was asked to prepare a capital budget. Included in that capital budget is a line item for alarm and communication. In addition, on the site side, ma'am, there is a line item for, for a number of linear feet of fencing to provide security in and around the play areas.
Thank you. Also with entrance, we talked, we talked about, you know, in our schools, we have buzzers. We're very careful, so you will do the same.
Yes, yes. When I said communication systems, I was referring not only to intercom, but also the buzzer system. Yes, ma'am.
And one thing, it's when I read the application, it, it kind of took me back and it's a little bit humorous maybe, but you plan to do your own cleaning? Where did I see that, did I?
She wrote that, then I like.
Yeah, I think so. I thought, oh my gosh, after teaching all day, I don't think I'd be cleaning the toilets. But am I nuts? Did I read that? I, I don't. I must have misread it. Personally remember. No, it was this one. I thought it was this one, but, but you, you will have janitor, you will have janitorial services.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
You made a point of saying that the building that you are, you have a letter of intent with, has cafeteria? I'm sorry. You made a point saying the building that is under a letter of intent has a full cafeteria, but you're not going to use that?
No, we will use that for our students to eat their bagged lunch in.
But not cooking food? It's just a space?
Actually, one of our intentions in, during the energetics class, is to provide students with the opportunity to learn how to cook. We have Arnold's Raw Food. For example, his daughter's offered to come in and teach the kids how to make smoothies as an, as one example. We also have Lisa Foster of Fostering Health, and we intend to bring her in to teach the students how to make nutritional meals. So we will be utilizing that, that cafeteria and the kitchen.
The, I, I noticed and I recognize somebody said there's a need to acquire some type of, or you're typically, I think your business manager, typically you need to acquire a line of credit. Do you have a line of credit established?
It's, of course, impossible to secure a line of credit without having an approved charter. So the sequence of events there is achieving a charter and then approaching various banks and lending institutions for a line of credit. We've had a success rate in the past three years of 100% of obtaining lines of credits for brand-new startup charter schools who have a solid financial model, which we believe this application certainly does.
Is there enough money in your projections for the fit-out of the established or the building that is under letter of intent?
Sure. The total site cost line in the budget includes base rent, which is only a portion of the total site cost. Other items in there are some of the custodial costs, some of the repair and maintenance costs, the real estate taxes, and other items that are included in the letter of intent.
Now, one thing that Ms. Leonard asked that I, I didn't quite understand your, your response. If you plan on K to five, if you get most applications for this full-day kindergarten that you, you want to open up, you know, and you get 80 applications, are, are you then going to go into a lottery system based on grade or is it based on the entire population?
It will be based on grade.
Based on grade?
That's right. So there will, not wanting to speak for the board that doesn't exist yet, we, we're not going to allot 80 spots for kindergarten, thus sacrificing spots in, in other grades. There needs, while it's, it's not uncommon to have more students in the first grade or two, that type of disparity would not benefit the charter school, would not benefit the students. So it's anticipated that the enrollment in the earlier years will, if greater, not much greater than, than that in, in the other years.
Okay, thank you.
A follow-up to that question, Ben Shapinski, School Board President, I'm sorry. First off, Naomi, thank you very much. It was a very nice presentation you and Kim did.
Thank you.
But a follow-up to that question, why isn't it in your long-term interest to accept multiple kindergartens? Are you assuming that your long-range projections are built on a progression of five years of student enrollment or you, or you don't like the idea of them coming for one year and staying and then going on to somewhere else? I mean, I'm not really sure I understand that specific.
Okay, well, I'd like to refer to our PowerPoint slide, balanced, balanced development, right? We do, we do seek balance in our school and, and balance for our students, transferring in and out, as you say, coming for one year and then leaving and interrupting their program. I'm not sure that would benefit the students. I think we need to look at who we get and then determine what's best for our kids.
So if you had the opportunity to have five kindergartens full day, you wouldn't do it? I get the business model idea that the progression is there, they're staying and you're gonna, you're gonna have them as a captured clientele for five years. I get that, but.
Right. Well.
We see a huge change from kindergarten enrollment to first grade.
Yeah, so really, our facility has to do with this.
Yeah, I would assume it's limited.
Yeah. If I had my way, we'd take everybody. But however, you know, if we take 80 kids in kindergarten and then 80 kids moves on to first grade and we take in another 80 kids in kindergarten, our, our current building cannot sustain that and that will force us to go to a lottery. So it, it's really in the best interest, you know, for sustainability to balance out those numbers.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you. And again, it was a very nice presentation.
Thank you.
I'd like you to expand on your explanation of the 18% for benefits. That didn't seem to compute. The 18% figure you The 18% figure you gave on benefits, is that the employer's share for healthcare, pension, payroll, taxes?
So that, the calculation for health insurance, dental, life, and disability, whatever package the board approves and establishes, is based on 18% of total salary expenditures. And historically, we've found that charter schools can find benefit packages that are comparable to district packages at that ratio of expense from total salaries to health insurance costs. It assumes, opt-out provisions would be available, so it doesn't make any assumptions on how many staff would opt into the benefits, how many would opt out. It assumes that 18% of the total salary number will be, will accommodate the total benefit expense. Peasars, so the retirement system is separate from that calculation, that's a separate line item. Unemployment insurance, workers' comp are all separate line items.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, I spotted the eastern flair in your, in your philosophy and your approach to school, and I appreciate that. I broached on that area of training myself, especially the mind, body, heart. I really appreciate the holistic approach. But I have to be honest with you, I was very happy to hear that SPA stood for Spanish and not spa. Yeah. So that was a little something. Yeah. And one of the concerns I have with your approach, and I really admire that approach, I really believe in that approach. However, there's, your plan is for up to eighth grade, is that correct? The long-term plan? The long-term plan is up to eighth grade?
Yes.
Okay. And then eventually, what timeframe do you have for that? Okay, it's eight-year plan or five-year plan?
First year is K to five, add an additional grade each year until K to eight, so by the fourth year will be K to eight.
Fourth, four years. Okay. So, my question is this. You're going to be taking a different approach for people and training them and students and our children up until eighth grade. I'm sorry. Up to, up to eighth grade. They're looking to educate our children up to eighth grade in a specialized learning environment. And my concern is, or my question would be, what plans do you have in place for the transition of leaving eighth grade and going into the general population of North Penn and other schools that don't follow the same sort of curriculum and education process that you were employing?
It's a very good question, and I currently teach eighth grade, so I have to prepare students for the high school. So I have been doing this research within my school system for 10 years now. And what I've found is that they're not actually, they don't stand out. It's just an, the self-regulation, the awareness, the consciousness program, tools, they have these systems within themselves that they can make it anywhere. So they don't stand out when they leave. They just come back and wish that somebody else spoke the language when they got there, and then they end up asking for, looking for these things personally. So they realize that they now can take the systems within the high school, use the tools they have, succeed, and then they start seeking things where before they weren't even interested in anything outside of school.
Additionally, being a seventh-grade teacher in the Perkyomen Valley School District, we're also keenly aware of preparing students for high school. It's a transition no matter what school you're going from, what middle school. Middle school to high school is a huge change, and the system from middle school to high school change, the public system changes as it is. So we're hoping, or we believe we will, give our students the tools to deal with that change.
I hear what you're saying. My concern is, though, I had two children that went through the North Penn School District, and they were very successful. However, it was a big change going from middle school to the high school, and they had friends that they carried along with them, that was a shared experience for them, you know, and so they could lean on each other to get through the experience. With this sort of model, they're going to be very dispersed throughout the high school, and I'm a little concerned that they would need extra preparation to be, to transition to the North Penn High School experience.
Well, I think one of the things that will help is our community system that we have established, so they'll know that if they can't find things within a school, then they have the community go to. So that's what I also like about that. When I went to school, if my needs weren't met one way, I didn't know how to get them met another way. So they will see that this is, with the Academic Excellence Program, we strive to make sure that we fit the model that you're using in North Penn School District and throughout the state of Pennsylvania. So they'll see commonalities within that system. And then again, these inner tools to regulate themselves, they will understand sometimes in life, you will be the only one, and how to survive those situations. So we really, I mean, we honestly have to do it as teachers. I have to be unique, but then fit in the Norristown Area School District, and so I think I've learned personally how to do that.
I'd like to add to that also. Our students, upon approval of the charter school and upon arriving to middle school, many of them may be participating in your athletics program, so they will know students in the North Penn School District. Additionally, you know, having so many schools feed into the high school as it is, I think that issue happens with everybody, that they, you know, they kind of get broken off from their group. So ENG Charter School, you know, the students will be dealing with the same thing that all middle school students in the North Penn School District are dealing with.
But I do want to thank you for raising this concern because it's why I didn't talk about it before then, and now the system's just overflowing into a public system sector because it's time and because I've tested these systems to make sure that they're safe and that the student can, will fit in other places. And again, I use myself as a model also.
Thank you. I would like to second what Mr. Shapinski said, that it was a well-done presentation. I thank you for your application. I thank you for your interest in our community's children, and thank you for answering our questions.
You have a beautiful school district and a beautiful community. Thank you very much.
Are there any further questions from the Board or Administration at this time? All right, seeing none, this is now time for a public comment. And again, just to reiterate, anyone who wishes to speak to this application has every opportunity to do so. We ask you to go to the podium and state your name and your address. Now's the time.
Hi, my name's Terry Anderson. I'm a resident of Lansdale. Oh, thanks. Sorry, Terry Anderson, a resident of Lansdale. I could, I would like to speak about ENG in two different aspects. I am a parent in the North Penn School District. I have a son with autism who attends Gwinnett Square Elementary School. I feel lucky in the respect that when my son entered Gwinnett Square in kindergarten, he got a teacher who I feel goes above and beyond needs to specifically address needs of my child and help him progress. And I feel that North Penn School District is providing my son with an awesome education in that respect. I kind of got a different aspect of it when it came to extended school year. My son went to extended school year at Culp Elementary School, and it was a completely different experience for me. My son came home on the bus every day, having wet himself. And I think that, the way that I feel about that is, as a, as a parent who has a child that does not fit a cookie cutter mold of a student, it's really important for me to have a choice. So that if my son had entered this school district and didn't have an experience like we are having with the teacher that he has at Gwinnett Square, what would I do if I had no other choice for him? I would have to try and grin and bear it, try and support him at home as best as I could, and hope that he could get the best education he could in that situation. I think that having an extra choice for a parent like me who has a child that is special and has special needs is really super important. I'm also an elementary and special educator myself. I teach at a charter school in Philadelphia. I know firsthand of the extreme ability teachers have to analyze data, go back and deliver instruction directly to a child's needs, and I've seen firsthand how that can really close the achievement gap. And I think that ENG is hitting the nail right on the head when it comes to analyzing data, collaborating with teachers to provide the best education for the students of this community.
Hi, my name is Sarah Seoli, and I'm a resident of Hatfield. My, I have three children under the age of seven, so I'm looking at where my children are going to be going to school for the foreseeable future. My oldest is currently enrolled at North Penn, and she's been enrolled with North Penn last year for part of the year and back this year. We have struggled. She is an academically advanced student. I wouldn't go so far to say she's a genius or anything like that, but she's more on the advanced end of the spectrum. And after speaking and having to go to the point of talking to the elementary education director with North Penn, I was specifically told that you cannot meet the needs of the more gifted child. So I'm left with no financial ability to put my child into a private school. I have two other children upcoming, so even if I could put one in, I can't put all three in, and I have limited options. Last year, upon entering kindergarten, it was so bad that she would come home crying every day, that she hated school and was bored. And this was a child who begged me for two years to go to kindergarten. So it was devastating to see that she was losing her love for learning so quickly. So I decided to take her out of school, and I pulled her into a cyber charter school because I felt that I had no other options. And with the cyber charter school, it was extremely difficult with my two other children at home to meet her needs. However, we still had a much more rigorous academic schedule, and she was able to advance into the second grade, going back into North Penn for this fall. So I can firsthand say how, how much I appreciated having a cyber, having the charter school option, even as a cyber school. I'm, I was disappointed that I couldn't continue the experience, but it's, there's limitations as a parent. However, I was thrilled to hear not only one, but two elementary schools coming into the district and trying to have establishments here, and I wholeheartedly encourage you to accept these applications. Having more options is better than none. One option, two options, however many you can give us, our children, none of our children are cookie cutters. There's no child that is exactly the same as the other. There are very few children that learn from worksheets that are given in, on a daily basis to the public school children. I was allowed to go to a private elementary school as a child until third grade, and then graduated from North Penn later on. And the foundation of having that private school education was immeasurable, and it changed my ability and my outlook on my education, to the point that I went and got two degrees. I have my law degree, I have a Bachelor of Science in Communications. I love learning, and I want my children to have that. And unfortunately, I'm not finding that at North Penn at the lower levels. So I really encourage and can't say enough about this opportunity to have charter schools here.
Hi, my name is Dawn Cole Meyer. I live in Lansdale. I'm a proud North Penn graduate. I had the opportunity to work with Kim. I've been a teacher in the Norristown School District for the past 10 years, and I've been able to implement the strategies and systems that were presented here tonight. So I've seen firsthand the success that my students have had, particularly with the self-regulation within their classroom system, and the way that they embrace the ideas that they've presented to you this evening. And so I just want to stand and tell you that I wholeheartedly support the ENG charter, and I hope that you will consider accepting it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Meyer. I'm also a Lansdale resident. I know it's been a long evening. I'll try not to pontificate up here, but I'm sure my wife is rolling her eyes at me right now. I'm currently a fifth-grade teacher in Wissahicken School District. I also taught one year for North Penn last year. It is a wonderful district, bar none. Their dedication to education and meeting the mark is excellent. I've seen it firsthand. I do want to say, though, as a community member, as someone who pays taxes, as someone who has a child on the way, I do feel that this is not an us-versus-them type mentality. I believe we can work together as a symbiotic relationship, improving the community, improving students and our children. That's why we're here. We're educators, we're parents, we're here for the children, and I do believe this presents an opportunity to better the community, to better the chances for our children. So as a community member, as an educator, as a father, I just hope that we would look at all these proposals and really do them justice. So just showing my support. Thank you very much for your time.
We actually have the court reporter say, you don't need to sign in. Normally, we would, but we have a court reporter.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Scott Alcott, and I am currently a resident of Robert Gwinnett Township. I wanted to thank everyone here for listening to the presentations this evening, and I am a, currently a nurse of going on 18 years, and I'm a proud graduate of North Penn and grew up in Lansdale. I wanted to, to address a number of things that others have said, but just to reiterate that as a healthcare provider, looking at experiential learning, looking at experiencing the way in the environment that human beings biologically act, when you're looking at the entire person, is far more than, unfortunately, public education is able to do today. I'm on the receiving side of that many, many times, in terms of the patients we care for who don't have the ability to self-regulate in a number of different ways. Their own healthcare, it was alluded to earlier, the skyrocketing aspects of our GDP and where we're at with healthcare expenditures, and the fact that we've got a budget more than 18% and 10%, you know, sequential increases. Part of that goes into what we do with our children, so that they understand how to take care of themselves, not just academically, but physically, spiritually, and in all aspects of humanity. And I would hope that, again, you would all give the opportunities to these charters to be heard and to give the public an option, and I thank you for your time.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Heather Alcott. I am a resident of Robert Gwinnett. I have been a North Penn School District resident since 1991. I have to let you know that I am a North Penn graduate at this late hour. I don't know if I am repeating myself, but my, my husband, Scott Alcott, and I, we met at North Penn High School, and we are high school sweethearts, so just to give you a little bit of background information there. Thank you. I have had the distinct pleasure of working with Naomi and Kim from my time teaching at the Norristown Area School District. I am a former employee, former public school teacher. I am at home now with my three-and-a-half-year-old triplets. If it was not for my, my commitment at home, I would still be a public school teacher. But I am here offering my support for Education for New Generations Charter School. As a parent, as a community member, I feel that we, that we need to be offered choices, not to take away at all from public schools. Public schools are the cornerstone of our society. Our kids, we entrust our children every day to public schools. But we need some choices if we, if we don't feel that our public schools are meeting the need, or we need some complimentary services to what the public schools are offering. Also, we all know how unemployment is affecting Montgomery County. By allowing for this charter and for the other. By allowing for this charter and for the other charters, we can make a dent in the unemployment figures in Montgomery County. I mean, we did have a nice chuckle about the janitors, but let's face it, we will have employment opportunities for people to come and offer custodial services, secretarial services, maybe later on down the line, security services. So just to keep that in mind as you make your decision for the financial impact for offering employment opportunities to potentially lower the unemployment rate in Montgomery County. Thank you.
My name is Alicia Palani, I'm a resident of North Wales. As I said in the earlier hearing, I'm a victim of the public school's tendency to look at things, look at individualized students and unique students in a way that doesn't necessarily meet their needs. I have an eight-year-old, I have a special interest in the ENG Charter School because I have an eight-year-old who is in third grade, and I also have a two-year-old, and I would really like the opportunity to have the choice to place her in the charter school should I feel that she needs a more individualized and smaller environment for her needs. My two-year-old definitely looks like she's following in my footsteps, emotionally speaking, and it would be nice to have her, it would be nice to have her in a school that is tailored for her. I really like the ideas that they've come up with. I got to really see, get some insight into their, the ENG Charter Schools' plans for how they're going to deal with their students, and I think that it'll be great for those who need it. North Penn is a good school district. Again, like as I said before, I don't have major complaints as far as the school district goes, but at the same time, I do understand that there are some children who just don't thrive in that setting, and it'd be really great for them to have the ability to go somewhere else and just give it a shot. Thank you.
My name is Paul Edelman, I'm an Upper Gwinnett resident. I have two children at Gwinnett Square Elementary School. This was a great presentation, there were a lot of good ideas in here. Last year, when I campaigned for school board, one of my forums was protecting children's education. I strongly believe it. I've got a second grader and third grader. I also know the staff at Gwinnett Square very well. I also know that there are steps in place that if you, if there are issues with your children's needs not being met, the steps are there. The great ideas that were presented here tonight, I've been attending school board meetings for three years now. If the charter is approved, okay, there's no doubt, this places a huge burden on the school district, and it's a burden that ultimately will fall on the shoulders of the rest of the children in this school district. You have great ideas, why is tonight, or whenever the school district received the application, why is tonight the first time that this school board is hearing your ideas? We've got, suppose, there are North Penn teachers supposedly that are interested in teaching ENG. Why haven't they come forward? If they have, why haven't they been heard? You've got a school board sitting right here, every Thursday, every third Thursday night of the month. These ideas would have been great to hear two years ago, last year. It just scares me. I'm disappointed.
So I'm like one of you guys, except I'm retired and you're not. I'm Vivian Lowenstein. I was an administrator in Norristown Area School District, and I recently retired from Quakertown. Before that, I taught, I taught in Philadelphia, and then I was an administrator in Philadelphia. So as an administrator of Norristown Area School District, I was really impressed with these two women, their dedication to the Norristown kids, and their expertise and their content knowledge and their pedagogy. It's important for you to understand that it wasn't just me who felt this way. There were many times when a lot of the other administrators in the district called on these two, these two women to do workshops, to work with our teachers on their, on their expertise, on brain research. And I want to even say that it was the assistant superintendent and the superintendent who requested, who requested their help in moving the Norristown teachers forward. Not only did Kim and Naomi, okay, not only did they provide these workshops for the teachers, but whenever I observed them in class as an administrator, I always saw that they practiced what they preached, that they were actually using the research and their expertise with their, with their own students at Norristown. So as a retired administrator, I'm consulting like a lot of other retired administrators, and when I was asked to perform a gifted review for a neighboring school district, two of the people I immediately thought about was Naomi and Kim. And I made it so that they both participated in this gifted review, and everybody saw that they were a very good asset to the program, to the review. If the energy of these two women was not apparent in their presentation, I have a short story to share with you. As supervisor of mathematics, Naomi was one of my math specialists, and we instituted a math night not only for elementary school kids, but also for middle school kids because Naomi taught middle school, and she, and she wanted middle school kids to have that experience. So one year, one year Naomi not only wanted to organize it, but she wanted to serve the parents' dinner. She wanted to cook the dinner. I thought she was crazy. So after a couple of years of convincing her to think twice about this, she finally did serve dinner, and it was very, very successful. Many parents came with their kids to have dinner, but they also worked with their kids on mathematics. It was very impressive. So my goal in talking to you tonight is to give you a picture of these two applicants, their expertise, their professionalism, and their commitment to children. So I hope you take that into consideration when you make the decision to accept their application. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this application? All right, seeing none, thank you. Is there anything else from the school board or administration? Seeing none?
Could I just, I, sorry, I would like to thank the students behind the cameras here. It's around late tonight, they have, they have school tomorrow. I just wanted...
Yes, thank you. Any final comments from the applicant?
We're just very, very thankful to be here, and we thank you for your kindness and hearing our proposal, and we really want to thank the community for coming out and supporting us and supporting your children. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much. That will...
I'm sorry, can I ask just one, I have just one little, sorry. Did you put in an application to the Norristown School District? Since we're, you're all from Norristown.
We wanted to address the North Penn School District is because the number of Catholic schools closing here, and the need for this kind of education to supplement that drive. So that's why we focused on North Penn.
Not yet. Additionally, I no longer teach in the Norristown Area School District, I teach in the Perkiuman Valley School District, and I live there as well.
All right, then thank you all very much. That will conclude this evening's hearing. The board will render a decision in accordance with law. Thank you.